Okay, we've got a couple of other guests coming, but I told them they could be a few minutes late. They're driving in from Dallas, so we can go ahead and get started. If you're ready on the recorder?
Yes, sir.
If you all will stand with me, and we will have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day, and we thank you for gathering us together to handle county business, and we thank you for the opportunities and challenges you place before us, but we pray for your wisdom and direction on each one of these. We turn this agenda items, all of them, over to you at this time. We pray for our first responders and our servicemen and women, that you would watch over them, keep them safe in the work that they do. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to Titus County Commissioners Court. This is our first meeting of the month today on March 9th, 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. We'll begin. Item number one is our time for public comments or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. Anyone here want to address the court on anything not on the agenda? You're welcome to speak on other agenda items as we get to them, but this is your opportunity. All right, I'll head on to item number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from our last meeting in the month of February, our second February meeting.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve the minutes is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, reports from our commissioners regarding roadwork status and what they're currently dealing with. Commissioner Parker, if you're ready.
We've been cleaning ditches on the case of what we call the case and loop. It's 4950, and also on 4710 and 4760. We've been trying to get some ditches cleaned out and putting in a few culverts, and we sprayed our ROC week before last on First Street out here, 4205 and 4340, and it turned out real good. We had about three more miles. We're going to try to do this next week while Chapel Hill's on spring break, but don't look like we're going to get to with the weather unless it changes between then and then because they're giving rain and can't do anything with it when it's in. So, other than that, we've just been trying to keep holes patched and everything else.
How do you apply that ROC?
With our distributor truck.
And it's, but it's a water-based product?
It, no, it's just straight. You spray it straight, and it comes. I had a tanker sitting in my yard because that was kind of between the two places, and it was easiest place to get in and out of, so we used the tanker there and pumped it straight into the truck and then went and sprayed it. Had a little bit of problems out here on First Street because of the distributor truck was, it was kind of streaking it, and so I got on the phone and called Marty with Etnire, and he told me that, told me where another valve was that we cut off, and we turned off every other valve or nozzle, and it worked good after that. If y'all get a chance, you might go out and look at First Street or the road out by Pleasant Grove Baptist Church out there. That's the two that we dug, so.
Primarily you sprayed this straight onto dirt prior to anything?
No, it wasn't on, it was, these two roads and the other ones we're going to do, well, the ones down at the school was the one that they done in the unit system, and they needed another coat on them because they're losing some gravel, and all this does is put another coat on the, over the gravel to help seal it in, and so we, they recommend that you do two courses, and all of these have just had one course put on. Well, that one that they done down there by the schools had two, but it's got so much traffic on it, so we were going to put it on there and just see what, see how it worked with it, but it turned out real good. We were well pleased.
Did you put this on after you seal code or?
After you chip seal.
After, okay.
After you chip seal.
Let's get this mixed up. All right.
We got, been patching a lot of holes here lately, but most of it has been done patching, trying to catch up, and we've had some culverts put in, picked up a bunch of trees that has fell, and we had picked them up, and other than that, we're just having to fix, trying to get the roads back in shape.
Commissioner Fitch?
We dug out some ditches on 2325 and worked on a lot of drainage issues there, getting rid of water. We're cutting some trees down on 4530, and we installed a head wall on a covert on County Road 2910, and we filled some shoulders on that road, fixed the shoulders where they kind of dropped off when you come off the pavement. We've been patching a lot, doing some pothole fixing, and fixed a base failure on 1243, and today we're doing some side cutting on 1030, and we should be finished up north of US Highway 67, and we'll cut our way back over south through the precinct. That's it.
Commissioner Riddle?
We've been hauling route, mostly patching. We're throwing in a little, culvert stopped up and water over the road in our side time, our spare time. Anyway, that's it.
All right, item number four. We have some out-of-town guests for us who are going to talk to you about an item that they need our assistance with to complete, so this is to consider and possibly adopt an order with respect to Republic Services, you know, Republic Services here that provides our waste services, but with respect to the Republic Services, Inc. project and authorizing the county judge to execute certificates approving the order along with a public hearing. So, we're essentially here today to listen to something that is going to be brought to us by Mr. John Stoker, and Lita is here with him, so you can both talk or one or the other, but, and I did previously send this, all those documents to the commissioners. They've had a chance to look over that, but I appreciate you being here to help us kind of understand what this is and to assure us that this isn't costing us anything and doesn't put us at risk for anything.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners. I'm John Stoker. I'm a municipal advisor to the Mission Economic Development Corporation. With me, as you said, is Lita McKinley with Republic Services. You can answer any questions related to the landfill or specific to the company. Short is, is that Republic Services wishes to issue bonds for projects in 29 locations throughout the state, and so in each county or city, we're getting the same approval, which is required after a public hearing that's already been held, March 2nd, from the local municipality.
Explain that so that they understand why we didn't have a separate hearing here. You had a hearing down in Tyler that accomplished that purpose, right?
Per federal and state law, you have to have a bond counsel brace, well as the bond counsel firm, and you can have one public hearing within 100-mile radius, and then you still have to come to each Commissioners Court and have the Commissioners Court approve the financing. And so, the public hearing was held. There was no one in attendance there, although it was published in the local newspaper seven days prior, and so part of, once again, per federal and state law requires that the commissioners where projects located, in this case, your county, but there's also 29 other approvals or 28 other approvals that are required so that the financing can take place. As you pointed out, probably the biggest issue to your county and every others is to suspect our bonding capacity or bond rating. Not at all. You are not the issuer of the bonds. Mission Economic Development Corporation is approving this order. You have no risk or liability of this. These are special limited obligations solely for Republic Services, and once again, the county is not issuing the bonds.
Who is Mission Economic Development Corporation?
They're a development corporation down in the city of Mission. They have the ability through a bracket amendment to issue bonds for statewide projects so that you have cost savings. Instead of issuing 29 different bonds, it would probably not be effective to issue that many bonds, so they're a development corporation.
And they're issuing about, what was it, half a billion dollars or something like that?
Well, in total, it'll be a plan of finance, so you could issue over three years. This first issuance, they're looking to issue right at about 90 million, I believe, 89, excuse me, 86 million in volume cap we've received from the Texas Bond Review Board for this first issue.
But there may be more in the future. Will that require additional hearings or meetings with us?
No, sir. We did it with a plan of finance, so which means for the next three years that Republic can issue bonds if the market and if there's volume cap available from the state of Texas to do so, so this will be the only approval that would be required of the county.
And so, any county in which they do business in, you have to go before the Commissioners Court?
If they're, if they're financing it, yes, sir.
All right, but again, there's no financial impact to us?
Correct.
In any way?
Correct.
All right. So, you want Commissioners Court approval so that Republic Services can issue bonds and I guess plow that back into their operations?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions here for Mr. Stoker about this? He needs, he needs our approval or he needs my signature, and you need to give me approval to sign those documents for you. Lita, is there anything that you want to tell us or that we need to know?
I'm very busy.
Okay. We have a good operation, by the way.
We have a great operation here and a great team. We love Mount Pleasant.
Do we pay a service to Republic for our trash?
I defer to Ms. McKinley, but just to be clear, for this financing, there's no cost to the county in any shape, form, or fashion.
Well, you must get revenue from somewhere to pay a, repay a bond.
Well, there is. There's tipping fees and others, but as far as the direct financing, one is not necessarily related to the other.
The city pays a fee to Republic?
I defer to...
Would you, would you mind, just while you're here, kind of educating us on how our relationship and the city's relationship works with the landfill and with Republic? Could I get you to come to the mic? Because there may be folks watching this on YouTube later on that might be interested in knowing this.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lita McKinley with Republic Services. The city actually owns the landfill, and we lease it from you and we run it. In return, we pay you a...
Well, actually, we're not the city, so we're the county, but I know that the city does do that, and the city is the one, and we benefit from it indirectly.
Yes, yes. So, we pay a return back to the city every month. We also pay rent to the city, and it allows us to operate the facility. We have our hauling facility there too, which picks up the trash here in the Mount Pleasant area, and our job as, you know, the stewards of the landfill is to make sure that we run it in a very clean, environmentally friendly way, and I think we did a really good job. This is one of our best landfills we have.
And the city collects trash service fees on their water bills, and I guess that they in turn turned that, turned that over to you?
Correct. The city does all the billing for us, as is true with most cities, and we get one payment from the city for your individual trash every month.
Commissioner Riddle, was that an answer, or have you got any other questions? This is a good time.
That's all. That answers them. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. If you have any questions, please ask. Otherwise, if you will authorize me to execute these certificates approving this order.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of authorizing county judge to execute certificates approving this order related to Republic Services and their efforts to issue some bonds. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Do you have papers you want to leave with me? You need a quick signature? What would you like to do?
I'd like to, Mr. Captain.
Doesn't look like a quick signature.
I'd like to sign.
Okay. Do you want me to just mail that back to you? You're welcome to stick around. That's up to you.
I'd be interested to hear if you're up to that level, but I can stay here and also.
We're not going to have a real long meeting. We'll probably be here another 30, 45 minutes. If you want to stay, make yourself comfortable, and I'll get right on that. Otherwise, if you're in a hurry, I'll sign them and send them later.
Is that all we have to say?
All right. Item number five is considering possibly approve the annual renewal of video surveillance system contract with Newman Electronics at a cost of $6,200. That is no change over last year. We had a slight increase last year because we added on some new additional cameras. The proposal from Dennis, again, remains at $6,200. Just to run down what some of these items entail that they take care of for us during the year. The contract will be between Newman and Titus County, starts March 1 of 2020 and goes through the end of February next year. It automatically, let's see, contract will renew automatically each March 1. Contract is payable each March. Either party may terminate at any time for any reason or for no reason without incurring any penalty or compensation for early termination by giving the other party not less than 30 days. They examine the five digital video recorders and the associated cameras at the courthouse, annex, justice center, tax collection office, and adult probation. They check for correct recordings on each DVR and ensure that the network connections are correct. They ensure that each camera is operational and aimed and focused correctly. They repair any minor faults or problems found with the camera or the recorder during the monthly service. In the event a severe problem is found, such as a camera found dead or serious problem with the operation of the recorder or the amplifiers, the problem will be reported to Paul Lindsey and an estimate given at that time to repair the problem. Every, every six months, they clean the DVR fans, vents, and filters. They check wiring connections on all the cameras, clean the lenses on each camera, inspect the housings for insect nests or spider webs, and remove and clean the housing lens. Newman Electronics keeps a log of all services performed, and they turn this in to Paul Lindsey on a regular basis or at any time upon the request of Paul Lindsey. Any questions there? Lots of cameras and lots of DVRs watching over activities around here.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve the renewal of this contract is made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second, second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six. This is a long one. We have our friend John Martin here from Dallas. John, wave to the crowd here, and we'll bring you up here to the podium in just a second if you want to get ready. Because of instability in the bond market in our favor, John once again brings us an opportunity to refinance some of our bonds. He'll give you the details, but this is worded just like it was worded the last time we did this. There's a slight difference this time as far as the type of bonds we'll be discussing, but consider and possibly approve an order authorizing the issuance of Titus County, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Taxable Series 2020, appointing a pricing officer and delegating to the pricing officer the authority to approve the sale of the bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters, approving an escrow agreement and paying an agent registrar agreement, levying an annual ad lorem tax for the payment of the bonds, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Judge. I'm John Martin with Hilltop Securities. Thanks for the opportunity to be before you again today. Similar to what we did late last fall, early winter, there were some bonds where we could refund them and advance refunding on a taxable basis. Those bonds were not yet callable because, and so what has to be done under the tax code now is we can no longer advance refund bonds, so if you have bonds that aren't callable yet, you're setting up an escrow. The proceeds from these bonds are, go into a escrow of government securities, and then they pay off the bonds on that call date, which may be a couple of years away.
And in this case, we're talking about 2022, right?
Yes, that's right. These particular 2012 bonds are not eligible for redemption until 2022. Well, the deal didn't really work this time, so why are we, why didn't we take care of this when we did this late fall, early winter? Well, the math didn't work. It now does work, we believe, and so this particular issue is, should reap more rewards for the county than the last one. We're estimating, where the last one saved roughly $180,000 a year. We're estimating this is over $200,000 a year by refund, advanced refunding those 2012 bonds. The markets are crazy right now, extremely, extremely volatile. The 10-year treasury is down 0.25% this morning. That's an amazing, a couple-hour run, and that towards at half percent. In the world markets, it's crazy too. We've got, you know, the, all the oil and energy issues that are going on right now. The stock market opened down 1,500 this morning, so it's kind of scary. It is scary times, and so the market is trying to figure out where it is right now, but I do feel confident that what we've shown here is that, that the county does have an opportunity to save money, and the parameters are such that if it's not there, we're not going to do it. We'll put it back on the shelf and continue to monitor it. So, the, the only risk here is to move forward is we'll have, we'll have to start the process with the rating agencies, and we're estimating that fee with Standard and Poor's is probably about $25,000. So, if everything goes to heck in a handbasket, that would be, that would be the only exposure that the county would have at this point.
Twenty, $25,000?
Yeah. Everybody else works on a contingency.
We're talking about refinancing a total of how, how much?
We are looking at roughly $24 million.
$24 million. We're currently paying somewhere between 4% and 5%?
You're paying on those bonds 4.17%, and we're estimating the true interest cost on the new bonds to be about 1.9%, to be less than 2% to borrow out to 2034.
What are the chances of us being able to get this done and still be within our parameters?
I think very good. I think very good.
So, the risk of that $25,000 is relatively low?
Yeah, it's relatively minimal. I mean, we feel pretty comfortable. I mean, it might not be at this level, but it will certainly be within the parameters. Again, if we, and you'll, you will have the ultimate sign-off here, and we can advise, as we always do when we go through these things, as to whether we sit on this or move forward with it.
Because we're doing this two years in advance of when these bonds are callable, when does the county actually start seeing reduction in interest costs?
Because there is such a swing that...
No, when do we start seeing?
You will, you will start seeing it immediately. In this fiscal year, we suspect that in the current fiscal year, you'll end up with a surplus because of, you've already levied a tax for these particular bonds in this fiscal year, and so your payment that would be coming up in September will be less than expected, and so we suspect that the first year savings might be $300,000 right off the bat. And again, that, that is in your debt service fund, okay, so understand that that is direct savings to the taxpayers of Titus County. We can't take that money out of the debt service fund and put it in our operating accounts.
Well, that'll equate to a reduction in our, what do you call it, our debt service rate?
Your debt service tax rate. That is right. Which in this day and time with tax caps and so forth that the legislature has given us, that will be helpful.
And these are, this is going to be a taxable issue rather than non-taxable like we've done in the past?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's insane.
At 1.9?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, so we have, if it works, we look good. We save hopefully over $200,000 a year in interest cost. If we're wrong on the timing and the market corrects here, before we get this thing closed out, we lose $25,000, so.
The timing, by the way, to go to market is April 2nd.
April 2, okay. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Did you say it would, these would mature 2034?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, can you imagine borrowing out that far for less than 2%?
That's when the rest...
Yeah. So, that's not just a one-year savings. We'll continue to save that money for many more years.
Fixed straight bonds.
And all of the bonds will be paid off for the loop 2034?
That's correct. You're out of debt.
But each time we do this with Hilltop, we bring our debt service cost or our interest cost down a little bit more, so fortunately, the interest rates have been working in our favor since we did that loop project. Anybody want to step out there and do this?
I'll make a motion and we do it.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Last call. Any questions? Anyone in the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. There you go. Thank you, John. Do you have any documents to sign today?
They don't have to be signed today, but they're, I've got documents that Mr. Goldis, Bond Counsel, provided that I can give to Clark.
If, we're not going to be a whole lot longer if you want to, if you're going to wait?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay. Item number seven, approve oral and written reports. I think you've got those in front of you. We've got a nice narrative on the last page that you had seen out there that Harvard
Make a motion. We approve the report.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fitch. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll need your signature on that. Item number eight is our treasurer's report. Mr. Pretty? Thank you. Motion for approval of the treasurer's report by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, approved budget amendments. We have no budget amendments this month. Item number ten, signed pay orders and approved payment of bills.
Make a motion with payer bill.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, closing comments, if any, Commissioner Riddle?
None.
Commissioner Fitch?
None.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to refinance these bonds and thanks for our, to our financial partners that help us to know when that opportunity arises. That will be a nice deal if we can get that done. We're hoping that'll happen. Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, I appreciate everybody coming out and voting this past week and I appreciate all the support. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Parker?
I have nothing.
All right. That's it for today, folks. That was a short one. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if and when you are ready.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Applewhite, second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.